Good. We'll be shut in a second.
Oh, there's you.
You can be, you can be damn great parents.
That is much. He raised a good grade for them.
I think more. Yeah, how about that? And he's got a big head. It's sad for him. Anderson. That's, that's uh, Hanson was making out. Uh, that was the first thing we got.
It's great.
Yeah, we were there. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right, you know, I got home about one thirty. It was more than seven. Long, long day, long evening. But well worth it. That's my camera. Good. Hey, but why?
Your, your fun, I see. Right on my, so maybe she's done that.
I saw you.
You don't know straight.
Oh, you say, what are you feeling?
He liked to get.
Yeah.
John, he's got some money.
People talk. Let's see. Okay, we're sorry. For eating with everything.
Yeah.
All right. You probably had a word, but not. Nobody else. You're the one who could be in any time.
I would know you gave me some.
Yes, taking sure to do the best. You all have had your screw. I thought it was all my. There are any testers. So now we're going to.
Always like, right. It's been like a couple of months. They're, they're not going to come here. See, that way I'm right. Something else.
I was supposed to.
I'm like, oh, I said, oh. You come on, I wish you all chairs. Something else.
And ready for today. What? Oh. Do what? Yeah.
There, sorry, didn't miss it.
Yeah. We gotta be more.
Good morning. How are you? If you haven't heard, it's not became great parents.
Oh, congratulations. That is awesome. What uh, what was uh, is it a boy or a girl?
Boy, his name is Anderson.
Anderson.
Yeah.
That is fantastic.
As he made.
Okay.
Yeah. We were there last night. Quite.
Where, where did, where, where was the, the hospital?
Uh, U G Delta Tower.
Tower, okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
They live in Longview.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You've been.
Well, then, Bart, if you aren't here.
I got home about one thirty this morning, of course.
Well, it's been too much.
They're, they're also very rich. Yeah, it's already.
Oh, thank you.
She and Jesse have been so powerful. What pretty else? Yeah, well. Rather than doing, I'm probably doing this session. I can see. You're like, he's trying to talk to me. I think I put that in more. People were helping by the show. Oh, they're, they're eight years. Yeah. Okay. Who can you say?
So, but, but I want to just stop standing on the bar.
Oh, okay, okay. Third one home. That's a good post last night. Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll set the whole front. Thank you. This thing's here.
Yeah, I know. Good, how are you?
I'll tell you the city.
Yeah.
I look at up there. Busy, uh, friends coffee business.
Yeah.
I'll switch it to. Now, three points, six, three, the back.
So you work for them now?
Yeah, I'm doing district direction.
That's great. Oh. Where's your office?
Well, we're, we're all there to go. Yeah, February first. We're, we're gonna decide those uh, uh, the leagues here. I'm sure.
Okay.
So we're not bad. We're, we're gonna have that office. Uh, every will, I do stuff. Lot of tall, tight.
Right.
And it's up for spring. I think about three, but the whole office.
Very good. Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. Hey, I don't know. He is. And all right.
Oh, yes.
Morning, how are you?
Absolutely. I'll holler at you.
Are you? Hi, good morning. How are you?
I'm good. Good.
I would show though. I mean, Virgins. He's, he's a big one.
He's here.
You all right? You're in the rain?
Yeah, I'm all right. I got electric. Can you believe that? Catching up though.
We need some more chairs. There's, there's really in the closet. I think there's some of the closet. Like the monitor, Michael, silence your cell phones. It is now nine o'clock. Do please rise. I've asked Commissioner. Mitch Curtis to lead us in our indication today.
Lord, we just think that we could come here today to serve you, Lord, and, and to represent these people. And um, uh, we're very small down here, God, and you're very big. And you see things that we don't see, Lord. So today, help us to see things the way you see them and to hear you, Lord, and just be able to follow you through this day, Lord. And um, maybe our will and your will get lined up. We'll have a good day here today, God. Remind us all, Lord, that every decision we make is gonna affect somebody on down the road. And um, even now, Lord, so help us to make the right decisions, God, above all else, just to honor you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Man. Bless the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag of the same. One page. With liberty and justice for all. Bless to the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God, one and universal. Thank you. You may be seated. I'll call this meeting to orders on Wednesday, January the twenty ninth. Nine o'clock. And uh, we do have a forum. All the commissioners and the judge are present. Item number two, general announcements. Do we have a recognition of employees? Jessica?
We do, Missy, here.
Okay, all right. Well, go ahead.
Hi. You guys, you may know her, uh, Ms. John Bighouse. She has been the chief deputy uh, for the Texas Center Office for going on ten years now. So I just wanted to um, show her love and support and thank her for ten years of office service for the Van Zant County.
All right. Jessica, is that it? Do we have more?
I've got a general now. I've got one judge.
Okay.
I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. I did. Are you doing? Are you? Okay. Uh, on Monday, uh, this coming Monday, February third, at six thirty at the Edom City Limits in Edom. We'll be having a town hall meeting to discuss the jail and the courthouse projects. Uh, we have the numbers in and we're gonna start getting the uh, the word out on what's going on and uh, how we're gonna approach this. So uh, come out Monday to Edom City Limits on February third at six thirty and uh, we'll go over this topic.
Okay, very good. Any other general announcements? All right, we'll go, move on to item number three, public comments. We have one uh, submission for public comment from Ann Nelson on item number nine.
Judge, Judge, Commissioner. Um, I'm Ann Nelson. I'm from precinct two. I'm here on behalf of the Van Zant County Democratic Party. And I have some comments about agenda item nine, which is the debris monitoring contract. I, I'm not sure if this is also for removal or just monitoring of it. And um, uh, first of all, I know that the commissioners have spent a lot of time watching the state's effort in the county to remove debris and finding um, companies that were very good at removing the debris, especially Commissioner Barton. So I wanna thank you all for doing that extra effort for the county. But um, I do have some concerns about is FEMA still part of this arrangement? And assuming that an award is given, the company does their work correctly, Van Zant County files all the paperwork, is FEMA? Is FEMA still going to reimburse us? We hear a lot on the news about funds are being just cut off. So I wanna make sure that we're guaranteed that if we do this contract, we're gonna be reimbursed. And also, has the county reached out to Representative Good? Um, about FEMA funding, uh, concerns maybe about other funding? And has he absolutely totally committed to serving Van Zant County on this matter? Anyway, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. All right. Item number four, consent agenda. The consent agenda, our items considered routine by the commissioner's court and are enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the county judge or commissioner requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Are there any items that need to be removed or discussed? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Philip's make the motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made, second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Okay.
All right. Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number five, discuss consider approving the audit engagement letter with Patilla Brown Hill LLC for the annual financial audit for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. We'll find that we uh, engage an auditor to do our audit and we have, all right. Catherine is going to give us the update.
We're just looking to authorize and approve um, to accept the engagement letter from Patilla Brown Hill uh, to initiate the annual outside audit for the annual fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. We have on there that the amount should not exceed forty-two thousand two hundred. And in the last couple of years, if, if they've ran these around twenty-six thousand one hundred to thirty thousand a year. Um, so we'll begin sending out the audit confirms in February and timely reports will be ensured.
Are these the folks that have done the audit in the past?
They are. Heard good things.
Yes.
They did most, most everybody.
So you're, you're, you, you don't have any necessarily any direct experience with them, but you've heard that they do solid work?
Correct.
And you feel comfortable?
Yeah.
Bye. Is there a motion to uh, approve the audit engagement letter and authorize county judges to sign?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the audit engagement letter with Patilla Brown Hill LLC for annual financial audit and authorize the county judge to enter into that contract.
Right, is there a saying?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number six, an update on the youth diversion program.
Not my judge.
No.
Morning, Janet.
He got a whole lot purtier.
I'll make sure to let him know you said that. Uh, judge is in court this morning. He has a case this morning. Uh, we are here at the request of the, uh, the commissioners to update regarding the youth diversion board meeting. Um, and he was sat on the board. The board consists of Judge Shin, Judge Durham, which is the Canton Municipal Court Judge, and Chief Phillips uh, with the Van ISD Police Department, Commissioner Barton, and District Attorney Tom DeCurry. And do y'all have any other questions regarding youth diversion?
And the, the board is met?
The board is met. They have their first meeting. The position for youth diversions coordinator has been opened and we are currently receiving cover letters and resumes for that position.
Okay. And you have a timeframe on when you plan to make a decision? Ooh, I put her on the spot.
It was said to me, it would have been yesterday. However, uh, the board will review those documents, those resumes, and they will make that decision based on, on the applicants that are received.
Okay, and Scott said you all have a few applicants?
We have. Right now, I think we're sitting on five resumes.
Now, what's the current number of juveniles that would qualify for that program? Do you have any kind of estimate?
Currently, the board, the board named me as interim coordinator, um, and yay. And so uh, currently there are three cases that are pending right now that are youth eligible and we are, or that are eligible for diversion. Um, and I'm hoping to bring them in next week um, and see if they are interested in entering the diversion agreement.
Does the program, did you look at those cases that were already filed? Or is it only new cases that you're considering?
The only cases that are eligible for youth diversion are offenses that occurred on or after January first of this year.
Okay. Any more questions for Jessica? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, item number seven. Discuss to consider modifying the workers' compensation renewal for January twenty twenty five to January twenty twenty six to add a class code zero eight eight five six zero volunteer law enforcement and authorize county judges to sign.
So I found out this morning that Jessica decided unilaterally I would be the one to speak about this. Well. Um, I became aware of this issue, I don't know, maybe a month or so ago, when new uh, waivers were sent out to reserve officers in the county, asking them to acknowledge that they understood that they were not covered by workers' comp. And, and that was a decision that was made by Jessica's predecessor. Um, I don't recall um, if he came to the court and got approval for that or not. Um, but workers' comp is a two-edged sword. I know a lot of y'all who run businesses and, and don't need me to give you a lesson on it, but it, but it's a two-edged sword. And it's a two, it's a, it's a double shield in that it shields the employer from lawsuits by employees, but it also ensures that the employee gets some kind of compensation if they are hurt on the job. And what we're talking about today is not, is not getting paid while you're off work. What we're talking about today is uh, coverage for accidental death or dismemberment injury on the job. Not getting paid while you're off work because reserve officers don't get paid anyway. There are seven law enforcement agencies that are county law enforcement agencies. The four constables, my office, the sheriff's office, and fire marshal's office. Everybody that works there, whether they work as a full timer as a reserve, has to be TECO, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, certified. Most all of us have a handful of reserves. As the head of a law enforcement agency, it is my decision whether to have reserves, the sheriff's deciding for his agency, each constable for theirs, et cetera. Reserves are, in a county this size, reserves are vital. I have two investigators. If one of my investigators is vacation, sick, whatever, and there's something that needs to be done that takes two for safety, I call in a reserve and have him go with my investigator and fulfill that. Um, it's, it's a safety issue. My reserve, I only have one reserve currently. He also has some certifications that I guys don't have. So if I need him, which I, in the past year I have, um, to assist me to a crime scene because of his expertise and knowledge, um, uh, then he's available to me at no cost of the county to do that. Heaven forbid if we had a disaster here. We're all gonna call all our reserves to come in um, and help out. Uh, I know y'all hear all the time about how short-staffed a lot of the agencies are. We, we would all in that situation be calling on all of our reserves. If we continue to ask those reserves to serve without being covered by workers' comp, in my opinion, as your legal advisor, that is not a good use of taxpayer money. Because, a, and a lawyer's job is to think of all the contingencies, all the things that could go wrong, and advise a client on how to prepare for those. So we sit around and think about bad stuff that could happen. But, but let's say I called my reserve in to go with me to a crime scene. He's at that crime scene. He happens to be a fire investigator. Um, uh, and this happened this past year. Sean Davis was not available. Um, uh, there was only one at that time. Other fire marshal uh, couldn't get there. I called my reserve, who's also a certified fire investigator, to go with me to a fire scene. If something had happened and we had a car wreck on the way, he was hurt, could never work again. He's gonna sue this county. And the county's gonna pay because he's not covered by workers' comp. Whereas me, I am covered by workers' comp. I couldn't sue the county. I know I'm a bad example to use because I'm an elected official, but let's say he was riding with one of my investigators and they got in a car wreck. My investigator, who's been a dedicated employee, cannot sue the county for those injuries. He gets whatever the workers' comp chart says he gets, which is not near as much as what he would get if he could sue the county. But he gave up his right to sue. The reserve officer, if we don't cover him with workers' comp, has not given up that right to sue and can sue the county and will win. And will get a whole lot more money than the employee just got. Or maybe it's their families that get that. To me, uh, I asked Jessica to investigate how much it would cost to cover all our reserves. The number of reserves fluctuates. Um, right now, she believes there are fourteen reserves total uh, in the county amongst the seven agencies. Um, she had got an estimate for twenty. We had as many as twenty, and I believe it's twenty-eight hundred dollars a year to cover all.
Five dollars, and that would be if we started today as the effective date. We're curious through the end of this year on this quarter's compensation.
The end of the fiscal year or fiscal year?
Through December thirty first.
So it's about, i- it, it's about a hundred and forty dollars a year to cover each reserve.
A lot cheaper than a lawsuit.
That, that's cheaper than one lawsuit every ten years, let me tell you. So my advice, uh, I'm the one that asked Jessica to put this on the agenda from a legal standpoint. Um, I think it makes a lot of sense that we start covering our reserve officers with workers' comp.
And that workers' comp covers medical.
Covers all their medical, pays all their medical expenses. Um.
As to whatever the guidelines are through the workers.
Right.
And, and you know, there's a, say, a person lost the use of an arm or a leg or an eye. There's a chart, workers' comp has a chart. They get this number, no more, no less. Um, and as opposed to what a jury would award in a lawsuit.
So, and what is the procedure for us to identify who are reserves?
The only thing that I've been able to have on, or because I'm not allowed to have any TECO documentation in human resources, is just when they do a public access form, uh, their ID and a waiver showing that they are a volunteer. Whereas now we wouldn't have the waiver because they would be covered under workers' compensation if you chose to approve this.
Mm-hmm.
So really, it would be up to each office to provide who they have.
So I have to meet, I, I have to meet all the same requirements that the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement for a reserve is for a regular, for a regular officer. Um, they have to do all the training, I have to keep all those records and documentation and turn them into TECO. It should be my responsibility as the department head to notify Jessica, hey, I've brought on a reserve. Just, just like if I brought on a new investigator, hey, I brought on a reserve. Please take care of that.
What might happen in the event that one of the department heads brings on a reserve and doesn't notify human resources to add them to this policy?
I think the department head should be held accountable. I'm sure the insurance company would, i- if something did happen, I'm sure the insurance company would fight liability, but um, yeah.
You may have.
It has been difficult to get information in the past, but we've worked very well together recently since I've come in. Because I, I, when I got here, I couldn't figure out who was a reserve, if we had a reserve. It was just kind of a jungle thing. And they've all, our offices have been real good on sending me the information, especially just recently when I went and did a little extra research. They give me their titles, give me everything that they had on and very well, and excited, hoping that we get this going. And I think that there will be any problem in communication ever before.
I think most of, not all of the department heads that are affected by this are present today.
Yes, sir.
So. Okay. All right. Okay, all right.
I don't know.
Any further discussion?
So they won't have any choice in it. They'll be covered.
Correct.
And that'll be disclosed to them. I mean, they'll know that, right?
Yes, they can, they would, when I'm notified, then they'll get a sheet now that they'll sign saying that they know that they are covered under workers' compensation. Just like any new employee does.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the workers' compensation renewal to add a class code zero eight eight five six zero for volunteer law enforcement? And authorized county judge set. Come in.
Phillips, make a motion to to add the, the class code zero eight eight five six zero to the volunteer law enforcement. And authorize you to sign.
I have to say it.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number eight. Discuss, consider authorizing county judge to sign a contract with government capital. So this, this contract has been approved, I believe, or we didn't have it.
We approved, we approved the hiring company.
Right, we approved the government capital, but we didn't have a contract at the time. Now we have the contract to the, the contracts, it's my correct, correcting the, no cost to us.
Correct.
In 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 hiring them to do this.
The only way that they get paid is if the bond passes.
So this is the contract for them to put together the bond information, this financial company for the bond. And the bond is for the jail?
Jail and sheriff's office.
And would it be appropriate to?
And the, the, the new courthouse plan.
Would it be appropriate to move eight down below thirteen? Would you be opposed to that?
No, I guess it makes sense.
I don't think so because we cannot do thirteen today. We're not within the window. An appropriate time for that.
When's the window open?
It was February third.
Third through fourteenth.
Through what?
Third through fourteenth, I thought. I thought we had to have, I thought we had to prove that we're, or disprove that we're doing or not doing it. We have to do it between that time period?
To do it between that time.
Okay, I thought we had to do it before that time period. Okay.
And can the official resolution will be drafted by, drafted by bond council so that we get it all.
So we need to make sure we get number thirteen on the agenda between the third and the fourteenth.
Yes, I believe that date was the twelfth.
Well, it's the next one.
I think we better double check those dates, make sure it's twelve, it's pretty close to the thirteen.
I know, and that was my concern by the twelfth was that if if something
Weather event or weather.
Tabled, we'd have to have another meeting the next day and have an emergency meeting.
Well, we can check those dates and then thirteen.
That's true, but you know, this also has the capacity of falling to the emergency section of our discussion related to special sessions if it feels if 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 folks were so inclined, but we have twenty items and we could go this morning through February the third.
So on you, with our clip with number eight, it's not costing us anything, but we need to have a financial advising company in hand and ready to go. It's, it's, it's I mean, we're very, we're using them anyway.
And they're who y'all voted to select after the presentations from the two companies. It was just that the motion didn't specifically authorize the judge to, to, to sign the contract. You had a motion that passed to choose to select government capital, but it didn't include.
I don't know that we had the contract at that point.
No, we just, we just voted on, hey, we want to go with, go with the capital.
Well, it means nothing. I mean, we're not bound on anything if we hire them today anyways. I mean, we're not gonna pay them anything unless the bond passes.
And they, they have been, we have used them very much in the past. And so that was part of this consideration for selecting them because we had.
She's got good faith assisting already.
I'll make the motion to authorize the county judge to sign a contract for our upcoming bond issue.
Motion is made or second?
I'll say.
All right, made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Can I abstain? I don't know where I'm at on that. I think I'm all right. Go ahead.
So is that an aye?
I guess so.
Okay.
Reluctantly.
All right, so I have three ayes that makes it pass. Item number nine, discuss, consider awarding a contract for RFP twenty-one dash fourteen for disaster debris monitoring services per committee recommendation.
Uh, yes, this, uh, the committee met about a week ago and we had two applicants and we scored them. And it was unanimous that we're about to go with Debris Tech for this monitoring services to go into contract. And I guess to answer Ms. Nelson over here, you know, with this FEMA stuff changing, we
I don't believe it.
Talk about that or not, but I don't know how to answer her question, but I think it's a relevant question. But anyway, we've decided to go with Debris Tech on the monitoring services.
And to explain, we we have already approved the debris removal company to be Drury Construction. And they're the ones that are actually gonna do the work. FEMA requires that you have a second company to monitor the first company. Okay, and you you pay for those services. And that's what this award is, is who we want to monitor Drury, and that would be Debris Tech. And normally FEMA would reimburse us for our costs seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent of the costs to do all this work. But the Texas Department of Emergency Management is authorizing the additional twenty-five percent to be paid through them. So theoretically, all of this will be covered by somebody. Now, the question is, how long will it take to get there? But this will allow us to get, get the trees removed from the side of the road and meet the requirements of FEMA in the process. So.
So I'll make the motion that we design a contract up to hire Debris Tech for our monitoring services.
Okay, motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss and approve rules of procedure, conduct, decorum at meetings of the county commissioners' court for twenty twenty-five. We went through this, discussed it in our last workshop. That's the, the rules of procedure, what handed out right here on how we handle our court. We didn't change anything other than the dates on that. So is there a motion to approve the rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum for the Menzat County Commissioners' Court for twenty twenty-five?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Sir.
I'm giving, I'm giving it to Bobby. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number eleven. Again, we, this is discuss and approve commissioners liaison for twenty twenty-five. We discussed this in the workshop. Liaison is the commissioner or the judge who is a liaison to the different county departments when they have issues with other departments or with the commissioners' court or whatever. But there's the go to, go to person. So is there a motion to approve the liaison list?
I would, I think we need to amend one on, I looked at this morning on Chris Burnett. We only have one liaison. We need to add another one. I don't care who it is, but everybody's got two.
Okay. All right, would you like to be in?
Sure.
All right, so we will add is a motion to approve the commissioners liaison report with the amendment per Commissioner Martin. Is there a motion?
I'll motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss, consider approval of bond for Catherine Gasta, the county auditor, in the amount of three thousand dollars, five thousand. Is there a motion? That's Commissioner Phillips. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, can we sure? Curtis, all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider a call for a countywide bond election for May third, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to table.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion is tabled. All those in favor of tabling motion say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss, consider approval of the Holden Estates subdivision plot located in Menzat County Road sixteen oh four. Precinct one.
Yeah, he's met all the criteria that he's supposed to go through. It's a tier two. He's met with the engineer. Everything's in order. So I'd like to make a motion to approve it for filing, Holden Estates.
All right, motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number fifteen. Discuss and consider approval of Sierra Homes Platte located in Menzat County Road twenty-one twenty in precinct two. Uh, yes, they, this is very similar to the, to the last slide item here. They have all of their utility service approvals certifications. Nine-one-one addressing, and our engineer has signed off on it, so it it would be my motion that we approve the Sierra Homes subdivision. It's a second tier subdivision, and it has complied with all of the rules that we have established in the subdivision process. So I would make a motion to approve this this subdivision for Sierra Homes Platte located in Menzat County Road twenty-one twenty in precinct two.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and the second is, how many lots is it? Like three or four?
Yes, it's, it's not, it's not a big subdivision.
Yeah, it's three.
Three.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Who's seconding?
I do.
Yeah. No, you seconded the first.
Yeah, I know.
All right. All right, did I call for the vote? You did, okay.
We did.
And we passed. All right. Item number sixteen, discuss, consider Wood Creek Estates, phase two, platte located in Menzat County Road forty-one oh six and precinct four.
Yes, this was found to be a replat. He's met all the requirements. We've given the thirty day notice for a public hearing. He sent all the letters to the neighbors. And if anybody from the public wants to speak on this, it's up for them to speak and then we'll consider the neighbors' comments and then go from there. But it's been open for thirty days for, for any public comments. And if there's no public comments, I'd like to motion to approve Wood Creek Estates, phase two platte on Menzat County Road forty-one oh six.
All right, motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. And how many lots? What, about eight or ten or?
No, it's more than that. Thirteen? Okay. I've got about five of them. I'm gonna get them all with stuff.
Okay. All right, motion been made. And second, is there, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number seventeen, discuss, consider authorizing payment to Saber Communications for invoices five three three eight seven oh F. Five three three eight seven four F, five three three eight seven seven three, excuse me, F. Five three three nine one seven F and five three three eight seven nine F for work performed constructed in tower sites and shelter. Saber is the contractor that is building the towers or four towers, and they are substantially complete. With that, and these are invoices for the work that has been completed to date. So great questions. Is there a motion to approve authorized payment?
I'll motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. All right, item number eighteen, we will now go into a workshop. This is new to us where we, we have a line item as a workshop where we go and and discuss things, which means that the people in the audience are able to talk back. We are able to converse with the people in the audience, whereas under a normal commissioner court meeting, that's not happening, but under, under workshop rules, they're able to do that. So item number eighteen is discuss the P. Twenty-five radio committee.
Yes, Judge, I asked for that to be over, just to clarify, favor two. I know we appointed a committee
Yes.
to be over it. And I just wanted to make sure that the committee who they were responsible to answering to or
Next measure, well, go ahead.
Or or bringing, bringing the results or what they're, what they're doing.
All right.
So and you know, because I mean, I I just feel like it's that they weren't supposed to be the one to make the final decisions. The committee.
Okay.
So I
They weren't, or?
They're not, I I don't think that they should be able to just say, okay, we're gonna do this. I think
You want it to be approved by the commissioners?
The commissioners' court, yes. Sorry about the wording in.
Okay, all right. Well, let me just say, you know, the commission, the committee was approved two, two, two weeks ago. And we had our first meeting on Monday. And that committee consists of the sheriff, the chief deputy, and Jeremy Jones and Holly, the dispatch supervisor, includes Scott Slaton. And Ron Beaver for the IT department includes myself and Commissioner Williams from the commissioners' court, and it includes Barry Black, consultant that has been working with it. So there's nine people on that committee. However, four of those are, are the, the tech crew that's working day to day on resolving all of the issues and meeting as far as the installation and the of the equipment and whatnot. So we haven't gotten to the point where we've had the committee. We've had the one meeting, and there will be things that need to be discussed or decided. And I guess the question is what is it that you want us to bring back to the court to make decisions on?
I I guess that it would just be that if there was a decision that had to be a, a change of of some of the
Change order?
Yeah, of of any of the previous already ordered.
Yeah, if
Yes, any change order with the contract comes before the commissioners' court. Okay, and you know, I, I, I will be glad to hold a workshop once a month to kind of update everybody on where we're at and what we're doing.
I did, I think that, that the commissioners' court has been involved in it this far, that the commissioners' court needs to be still.
I agree, I agree.
I think what we're saying is anything that goes on business-wise needs to be signed. Whatever's going on does not get approved or done, done, going to do this.
And that's exactly, it it will continue on that way. All the contracts and whatnot, like we're meeting today, talk about and once, once we go through all that, then that contract, and then they will come before the commissioners' court to be approved. So, yeah, no- nothing to be spent without being approved at commissioners' court.
There's, there's one, there's one reason.
But that's, that's the one thing, but there's another thing too that that I would like to see. We have to figure out is when there's We have to figure out is when there's decisions regarding entities, access to our, our system and encryption issues and things like that. We've got to come up with a plan on how to address that.
Yeah.
That's, that's the other one.
So, so what you're saying on that is, is when that plan's put together, then it, so the committee will put that plan together and then bring it.
We're gonna discuss that on our next meeting, we're gonna kind of discuss, you know, this uh, how we're gonna handle the, the situations where uh uh conflicts, let's say. How are we gonna handle it and do it and, and what we need to bring and, and we'll address, you know. Uh we'll give, provide eighty minutes of the meetings and, and discuss what the Commissioners Court, what needs to go before the Commissioners Court for final approval.
I'd like to keep saying so.
Yes, sir.
As, as a citizen of the county, I don't need any agreement, uh no matter what it is, whether it's a committee to look at at contracts and so on, it should never release the responsibility that you may have to us, the citizens. It should always come back to you, to you guys to look at, uh no committee should make any binding decision and come back to the Commissioners Court and that Commissioners Court to ratify. Number one, you cannot ratify a decision, the decision may, that's been made by the court at the time the court needed. So, that's what I, I hope that you do, that you always have this committee come back and report to the Commissioners Court on no matter what the, the committee is appointing there, that does not relieve, relieve you guys of your responsibility that you have.
Okay.
I recognize that all this is, is preemptive communication because this radio committee just started and I think good uh evidence that uh the, the committee is not trying to usurp any powers, the last agenda item was the uh for the payment of certain Saber Communication invoices, so if the committee had some design to usurp the authority of the Commissioners Court, then it would have been evident that that last agenda item would have stated to ratify or something else, so I think that uh you should feel secure that it's not the intent of the committee to act in that manner even on this.
And safe with payments or any other comments, Mr. Black was up on the speaker on that screen right up there saying, I've reviewed all this and it is all within lines of our contracts and everything, I didn't see Mr. Black up there. My second question is, Mr. Black is on this committee, he is not a volunteer, how much is Mr. Black charging us for his time to make this committee?
Uh what is a normal rate is? Whatever that is, I don't know. He is an integral part of this whole thing because of the, of the knowledge that he has and the way of uh the, how the, the radio system works and what we need to do.
So if you have a three, so you have that three hour meeting in the committee, and Mr. Black, and I think he remembers so much of me that he charges uh pretty intensive, uh so he's gonna charge you, the county for that every time, the committee meets, if you meet, or.
As part of the uh, part of the arrangement, the contract that we have with him to help put together this whole system. Yes, he's getting paid for his time on the committee, that's why our committee meetings only last an hour. So.
Think we all got the same goal in common, but we're ninety-five percent done with this thing and we can't screw up this last five percent. Not, not as far as getting it all together, but we're so far, we're almost done with the installation of this, we gotta get it running.
And that, that was my concern on it, it wasn't that I was against the committee, it was just, we're so far through it already that in the, in the court has pretty much been in control of it and I don't wanna see the court be pushed out.
I, I don't know that it has, you know, I, I spent, you know, not as long as, as you guys did here and I didn't feel like that we had any input whatsoever on the radios, uh in the, you know, from August through you know.
I think that's how it was.
And, and you're, you're.
So, I, I, I know that there were pieces of equipment, for example, that were not even considered or purchased, they're integral for the system, so I, I don't you know, I, I think now we have actually more eyes keeping track of what's going on than what we did before and, and I agree with you completely that the committee should not make decisions. Uh but I don't know, I'm not necessarily certain that Mr. Black's presence or absence today is indicative of anything necessarily. But I, but I'll keep that in mind as we go forward.
In the, in the binder with the invoices is the email where he submitted these invoices and uh approved them. So.
Just have new people, everybody's new and one person was in charge of it. They're not here anymore and it's a whole different group, we just gotta keep it together.
We're just, we're just trying to get everything.
Uh don't, I'm, I'm not against it, I just had, had some information that, that I want.
Well, I will commit to having a workshop line item each uh once a month, one uh to uh review what the process, process is, progress is of the radio. Cause I'm, I want everybody to know, there's a lot of work going on right now, a lot.
Well, there, there's, there's one commissioner can't make a bind and agreement with anybody, right?
That is correct.
And, and we can't spend any money unless it goes through the auditor's office.
Correct.
And she don't sign the check, nobody gets paid. There's a checks and balance system here. And I appreciate Commissioner Pearson bringing that to our attention, that we're paying somebody by the minute, I mean, that's a good thing to know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, what's it, a fifteen million dollar project?
No, ten.
Ten, yeah, just, just ten million, that's a lot better, it's a ten million dollar project, right? But it is paramount, it's paramount that we have a good communication system in the county. It's in, it's very, it's imperative that we have, it's, it's a disaster without good communication. So, I don't think, I mean, yeah, the committee's not gonna be able to spend money or make decisions outside of our court. And it's good that Commissioner Pearson came and brought that to our attention, I appreciate that, cause, cause we do have without radios, we still have a little bit of communication problems, you know, mostly on my end, but anyways, so, good deal.
All right, anything else? Anybody else have any?
Okay.
So. So I, that concludes the workshop on the P twenty five radio committee. Item number nineteen, workshop discuss the formation of a three ninety-one commission, subregional planning commission.
Yeah, I put this uh item on there, um one of the issues that we're running into in the county right now is uh is uh the battery energy storage system that is, that is uh actually under construction to the, pretty close to the intersection of Highway forty-seven and sixteen fifty-one in precinct two. And what we believe is a three ninety-one commission is, is formed from the local government code three ninety-one and it is the way that this is put together and what I've done is I've passed out here among these guys and, and uh I'm sure all of you out there are already familiar with local government code uh three ninety-one um which outlines how to form it, what it does. And so what I wanted to do was put this workshop together here to tell you that a three ninety-one commission can help us in obtaining information related to the battery energy storage system. And the way you form a ba- a, a three ninety-one commission is for two political subdivisions being uh or two or more, so county, we could file a resolution to form a three ninety-one commission, but we would need another city or another county in our area to join with us. And once we've formed this commission, then it's a combination of citizens and commissioners, members of the county that come together. And the purpose of this, it says, is to plan for future development of the communities, areas and regions so that we have adequate street, utility, health, educational, recreational. But what's important here is section D where it says healthful surroundings for family life in residential areas. So the, the idea behind a three ninety-one commission is to work with other, whether cities or other counties, to create a healthful surrounding and put plans together, which include roads, energy, and that's where this battery energy storage is kind of wrapped into the three ninety-one so that we can ask local, state and federal for information, participation. Because as you go to, and this is all being recorded, so you'll have the opportunity to look at the references that I'm giving you here, section three ninety-one zero zero three talks about that the combination of counties or municipalities or of counties and municipalities may agree by ordinance resolution rule to establish a commission. So when if we form a, if we vote on a resolution in two weeks, which is my intent to add to this, then we will need to have the support or input of other surrounding counties or cities to participate with us, then we form a commission. Doesn't require any financial contribution from o- on our part, it's a, it's a committee that, uh you know, of us and citizens for planning how we want Van Zet County and, you, you know, if it's Smith County or if it's Rains or Delta or Henderson County, how we want to approach the growth in the future of our East Texas region. And one thing that I noted on uh, you know, as, as I'm going through this in uh specifically three ninety-one zero zero eight talks about review and comment procedures and it it talks about how state and federal agencies, uh if they're going to be planning anything in our area, then they will uh in a state planning region or subregion in which a commission has been organized, the governing body of a governmental unit within that region or subregion, whether or not a member of the commission, so the state doesn't have to be a part of our commission, but they would have to uh submit the commission for review and comment and application for a loan or grant and aid, and that's the part that I think is interesting. Is depending on how you read three ninety-one and I should have given uh Tonda a copy of this. But um for these projects that are planned and this battery energy storage system is receiving forty million dollars of federal funds. This commission would have given us the opportunity for, to receive some of that grant and aid application from that federal entity that gave the money. Could we force them? No, but we can make a lot of noise. We, we are entitled to, under three ninety-one, to participate in the planning of what goes on in this region. So uh I would like to ask Nancy White, who's been integral in the information and in the communication with the surrounding areas, to talk for just a minute about the different political subdivisions that she's had communication with and whether or not she believes that any of those might be interested in participating with us in a three ninety-one commission.
Curtis mentioned checks and balances, currently in the state of Texas, there are zero checks and balances for battery energy storage systems, you don't have laws, you don't have regulation. They do not require permits of any kind. Also, let's go ahead and expand on talking on this, I'm sorry to advance to this, but a, a lot of counties and cities are looking for us to lead the way as far as what the three ninety-one is, because we've had longer witness, better understanding of education. Great County is actually here with a commissioner to find out what this is and educate themselves, I have been traveling everywhere. And I want to emphasize, this is not just a Van Zet County issue, I was on a, I had a Zoom call yesterday for the state of Texas National Security Infrastructure Meeting. Because they are concerned at all levels, because these are Chinese-owned software and they are integrating it into our grid at over nine hundred access points. And they have national security concerns and that I have a meeting on Friday with the national security team in reference to this. What the three ninety-one does is allows us to coordinate with these agencies to ensure safety, welfare and concerns of the people. Right now, they're building on top of a federal pipeline that is a thousand miles long. Next to a watershed provides water for Terra in Fort Worth County, next to an electric booster station with no regulations, permit or checks and balances in place. They do not have to talk to us, they do not report any of this, they just do it. We need to have entities come in and ensure we're safe, it's affecting property values, it's affecting, it's inflicting fear. It's a lot of what it is, it's fear-based, and it's not just Van Zet County that's afraid, there's more than a thousand Facebook pages created right now. And here's an interesting tip that, y'all seen what's going on in Moss Landing right now? The same company that built those batteries are building that one on top of that pipeline.
And Moss Landing is the one that caught fire a week or so ago in California.
They have hired more than four runaways. So it doesn't harm our county, our elects, or even any of the citizens to ensure our safety. It doesn't cost us funds, it just costs us our personal time as a volunteer. And all it does is give us the ability to coordinate with state and federal agencies to ensure that everybody's okay and we're not gonna be harmed, that's all it does.
The focus of a three ninety-one is for the health, safety and welfare of the community. It's not only for battery energy storage, a three ninety-one commission is for regional planning. So, it is our intent to move forward on a three ninety-one commission, it is my intent, I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners here, it is my intent uh to, to continue the work on the three ninety-one commission so that we can provide additional information and planning and planning strategies to those state and local entities that are interested in, in, in our Van Zet County area. Now, I would point out one thing that specifically stated in these rules is that the commission cannot force its will on Van Zet County. The commission cannot force its will on Henderson County or any of the other counties that are involved or not involved. It is a planning and it res- it, it allows us to receive information.
And to be clear, the battery energy storages are not the only issues coming this way. And most of you heard about the imminent domain that they're wanting to do for water source for Dallas. There are other areas of safety and welfare and concerns of citizens that could be addressed, but my primary concern for me is the battery storage. Like I said, I've been at meetings, a lot of questions, going around communicating about this, because the overall consensus is there is a national security concern and there is no regulation, legislation, law, any kind to protect us right now. This was put into legislation by someone that recognized that Texas is an agricultural state, we have farmers, we have livestock, we have ag and dense lands. And right now, none of that is protected, so they put that in to protect us from government overreach, that's literally what the law states. And you can't tell me that this isn't, because they're not considering what's going on in our county, they're not looking at us, they're not looking at our watershed, they're not looking at property values. They're looking at how much money they can make. And comes to an amazing thing, it doesn't hurt us to protect ourselves further, which is all this does is ensure that we're safe. And it hurts no one to ensure that we're safe.
All the entities that we've talked to so far, Fish and Wildlife,
EPA, TPEQ.
TCEQ, EPA, they're reactionary. They say, we're not gonna get involved or look at anything until there's a disaster. But these commissions give us the opportunity to seek out information. Somebody made an application for federal funds for forty million dollars, I can assure you that there's some documentation out there somewhere and the commission uh can go after that kind of information.
Good office texting while I was sitting here, and as far as the hole that Trump put on back for the funding, that was revealed by a judge, so it's in, like it's not in the process right now, so there's no hope on funding just yet. So we can't even enforce that aspect, but I want you to, I am in contact with, good office judge texting me, okay? I have been in contact with the chief of staff for Ted Cruz, I am literally trying to attach this in any kind of way we can. But at a local level, we need to ensure they.
So basically the commission will force the government bodies that are supposed to be protecting us to give us information, which will make them liable.
Here's an example.
It will make, it will make the government, it will make the government, like TCEQ, if they know there's a danger.
They have to instead of just forcing to.
Then they have to enforce. They have to do their job.
Here's an example, Judge Duhon, by the way, Judge Duhon successfully used this for the Texas Transit Corridor from, from Mexico to Canada, where they were gonna try to do domain on three hundred thousand plus Texas acres. He has sent me his entire Dropbox. In that Dropbox, you would, you will see, cause I would provide this to our commission, anybody that wants to be on it. What they did is they were concerned with tech stocks, so they pulled EPA in in reference to this and EPA came in with all their lawyers and tech stocks says, we don't wanna deal with your lawyers and they backed down. That's a big hand of what, why we don't have that right now. And he's provided us all of these documents, because it forces EPA, TPEQ and their lawyers to get involved to ensure safety. And if the safety is not confirmed, they cannot proceed. And it also requires a um legislator, usually probably ball hall for us, he's already volunteered to do so, to step in and also help coordinate that in all levels as well.
It, this is not necessarily three ninety-one, but it does fall back to what you talked about before, we were. It, this is not necessarily three ninety-one, but it does fall back to what you talked about before. We were made aware ye- yesterday that, uh, Senator Hall's, uh, bill that he put before this Texas Senate states that no software or batteries, no equipment manufactured in China can be connected to our grid.
China, free, I'd list them all. No foreign entities in the list, institute cannot attack. We need to get this bill passed. A lot of people are focusing on foreign ownership of land. They're not focusing on the leasing of American land. This is a Finland-based company leasing this land. But they're also not paying attention to who may be factors of the equipment, which is where the national security came in and where that conversation is going. Because right now, China's already threatened us. Go look for executive order G eight dash four nine by Abbott. He is, they have threatened to use our infrastructure, the infrastructure grid to harm us. It is out there. Go find the document. And every single one hundred percent of these facilities are using Chinese-based software and it takes seconds. They just put one bug in and it takes seconds for these to exceed over a thousand degrees of temperatures and have runaways all across the state of Texas at nine hundred access points. And it's not just Texas, it's all across the United States. And that's where the national security concern comes in.
So, uh, in short, I think we should pursue a three ninety-one commission for Van Zandt County. Thank you, Nancy. I appreciate that.
Hey Cliff, would you just, uh, no, I'm sorry. Would, would this pertain to, I know we've had issues with, uh, the human waste as fertilizer. Would that commission relate to that also? So we, we've dealt with that three times, I think.
Yes, because that harms not only just us, but our agricultural land, which is Texas-based, so yes.
So what is the specific, uh, task or, or, uh, what is it the three ninety-one commission going to be focusing on? Environmental or how's it gonna be set up? A three ninety-one is a regional planning. So if you think about it in its largest scale, it's, it's how to, how to plan uh, this area, whoever our partners are, for health, safety and welfare of the community. So if, if, uh, if, uh, our health, safety concern is on biosolids, then it absolutely can, can impact. If it is in planning a new thoroughfare or roadway uh, to, to, uh, you know, streamline our, our ingress, egress you, to, to other areas, then it, it would involve that. So it, it's a, it's a, uh, information gathering tool where you can put people together. We have people that are, that are, uh, very, uh, that are, have far more knowledge than, than I have related to engineering issues on the battery energy storage. We have people in the community that are versed far better on fire safety and explosion, uh, than, than I am. And so I believe that the commission will help provide information that will either notify us of concerns or, uh, quell our fears related to issues that are coming in.
And there is no other avenue for us to have any, any, um, oversight. We don't have any oversight over that. I mean, when this all began, the commissioner's court got accused of not protecting the county. But that, we didn't have, we didn't have oversight over that. The court doesn't have oversight over the growth of the county. We don't, we don't have a sword to swing or a hill to stand on. But this gives you one. This gives the committee one to work. And to be honest with you, the committee can't stop. I doubt that they could stop it, but they can make them.
It brings to light.
Can make them be, make them accountable for their actions. And they might, and it may discourage them enough that they see it's not a good business model for them. So.
Do you have other county, cities and entities that would be going to go into our, our?
You have a rain city commissioner that in our research, that's interested in talking and figuring out what this is right now. Um, I have scheduled meetings by the Red River. They currently have been crossing the Red River into their county from Oklahoma. I have that scheduled on the third. Uh, one of the mayor called me yesterday. I'm scheduled for the twenty-fourth. I'm gonna hold a community meeting on February, or not even February, sorry. On February twentieth, I'm doing that at Silver'sburg. Let everybody know we want them present. I'm gonna let you know. Also, if you go to our Facebook page, uh, it's Van Zandt County Community Upstate Efforts on Best Solar Winds. I have released a presentation that's thirty minutes long that tells you more about the best, the fact and the finances, the safety concerns and the further. And you can find that. And then we also have a petition for the state of Texas to let legislators know, hey, we're concerned about safety, but we've spoken, I've been going everywhere and anywhere that people will listen. Because we, Grant and Celine, for instance, they have it scheduled for February eighteenth. Um, I talked to Scott Snodgrass last, or Monday, and they have it scheduled for February eighteenth to vote on the three ninety-one to join us. They already had their work. They're not going to join us. So we have interested parties. Again, this is just for safety. So there are people showing interest to do, do so, yes.
Anything else? So then, uh, you'll, you'll see, uh, in two weeks, uh, there'll be an agenda item uh, asking the commission to, uh, to vote on, uh, on the creation of a three ninety-one.
And they have five, they have five of those scheduled to be in our county. Is that right? Am I right about that?
Seventy plus fires in twenty twenty-four. They're wanting to build a right next to that.
You know, eight years ago, I was, I was in a meeting of people that know and they were, they were talking about Texas going from twenty-eight million to fifty-two million within twenty years. And they're not moving to Pecos, Texas. They're gonna move here where there's water and business. And so we just need to get ahead of the curve on a lot of this stuff.
They predicted this county sixty-five thousand now, about twenty, twenty, it's gonna be ninety-five thousand. That's coming from the, from the state, but not from us.
I don't normally, I'm, I'm, I'm of the opinion you need less government, but we need, we need our government to do what they're supposed to do. That's, you know, that's, that's what we need. Those agencies that are supposed to be protecting us to be held accountable to protect us. So.
By the way, the Senate bill for Hall is nine three four. Senate bill nine three four that he was referring to for the software and equipment.
I have a question. Are there any bills being proposed to your county's local land use authority? Cause I think that's what we really need is to let us make the rules and we don't have, we didn't put municipalities can do that kind of.
I'm working on that. I'm gonna tell you I'm working on that. Senator Kevin Sparks, I have a meeting coming up with him because again, they're addressing owners of land. We should bring it back to county to have a right to vote. Do we want this here or not? I'm working with, um, Lenny Hall and also Sparks and Wesford Hill and a few others. And I actually got a call from, um, someone in Cooper, one of their legislative writers wants to talk as well because you are absolutely correct. It needs to be brought back to local. We should have to say, do we want these field cure? Okay, right now we don't. So it, it's in progress, but right now, no.
As a Van Zandt County Democrat, I'm perfectly happy to contact Democrat representatives in Texas.
It is a bipartisan issue. So yes, this is not red versus blue. This is we the people. This is an American safety issue. So as a Democrat, as a Republican, it doesn't matter. Contact anyone and everyone because everybody needs to know that it's bipartisan. This is not red versus blue. It shouldn't even be a thing in my opinion. Don't get me started on that. But it's we the peoples and yes, tell them.
And, and I appreciate that, but when I go on Facebook pages, I see Democrats getting bashed. This kind of, people should be bashed. Love that answer. We won't go to that. You don't have to talk about that.
Yeah, this is not awesome, so that's not.
Well, I, I appreciate everybody listening to my three ninety-one, uh, uh, diatribe here and we, we look forward to getting it on the, the next agenda. All right, item number twenty. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Cliff's gonna motion that quick.
I, I, I motion to, uh, close the workshop and adjourn. All right.
That's it.
Motion made to adjourn in second and all those in favor say aye. All of the pros like sign motion passed, so we adjourned at ten oh eight. Thank you, everybody.